Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 23rd, 2022, Meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. We're glad you've decided to be with us this evening. Just to review, the Planning Commission is established by state law and is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by our city council. Our Planning Commission reviews development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can be found on the city website. The Commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The Commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council, and it is in this regard that we'll be acting on the three main agenda items before us this evening. In addition, the Commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezonings, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews and below-market rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work in close partnership, and we greatly rely on the staff of our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating the enforcement of the city zoning ordinance and related policies concerning applications for residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. If this is your first time joining a Planning Commission meeting this evening, we are very glad you are here. We encourage your active participation, whether you're an applicant or interested member of the public, and I will turn to Assistant Planner Chris Turner to explain how members of the public can participate during various public comment periods this evening. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Regarding procedures for communicating at tonight's meeting, the commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation of your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation on your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on the bottom of your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. If you're calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad. That will raise your hand in Zoom. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we'll make sure each person gets a chance to speak. With that said, I will hand it back to Chair DeCarty.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Mr. Turner. So our first item tonight is roll call. We actually are missing three of our commissioners this evening who are away. That's Commissioners Barnes, Harris, and Tate. The four of us are here. I'll ask, I hope, in alphabetical order, and if you could unmute and say good evening just to make sure that everybody can hear you. So I'll begin with Commissioner Doe.
Present. Good evening.
Terrific. Thank you. Turn to Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
And Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
Great. And I am not vice chair, but chair, Chris DeCarty. My pronouns are he/him, and I'll be guiding us this evening. With four of our seven members, we have a quorum, so we can proceed. And with that, let me turn it over to Acting Principal Planner Sandmeyer for reports and announcements.
Yes. Good evening, Chair DeCarty, Commissioners. So the city council will hold a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, and one of the items is a study session for Willow Village, and this will be a study session on the applicant's community amenities proposal. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Sandmeyer. Any questions from the Commission? All right. Seeing none, we turn to our next item on the agenda, which is Item D, Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the Commission on any subject that is not listed on the agenda for this evening and items listed under the Consent Calendar. Each speaker may address the Commission once under Public Comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the Commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment other than to provide general information. So with that, if you are interested in a public comment on an item not on the agenda this evening, as Mr. Turner indicated, please raise your hand, and we can recognize you.
At the moment, I don't see any hands raised, but again, please click star nine on your phone if you're calling in or that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen if you would like to give a public comment. No, no hands raised.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner. With that, let me close Public Comment, and we'll turn to Item E, which is the Consent Calendar. We have one item, E1, this evening, which is approval of the Court Reporter transcript of the April 25th, 22, Planning Commission Public Hearing on Draft Environmental Impact Report, the Draft DIR for the Willow Village Master Plan. So let me open that up to Commissioners. Anybody want to pull that item from the Consent Calendar for any reason? All right. With that, then I would seek a motion for approval of the Consent Calendar. Mr. Riggs?
So moved.
I have a first from Commissioner Riggs. Do I have a second? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, I second.
All right. And as this is a consent calendar, we won't do discussion. So again, we'll have each Commissioner unmute and say yay or nay. So Commissioner Doe?
Yay.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yay.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah.
I will also vote yes, so that is approved four to zero with our three absent members, and that is our consent calendar for this evening. So moving right along, we now move to Item F, which is Public Hearing. We have three items this evening. We'll begin with Item F1. F1 is a use permit, and I apologize for pronunciation. For Amy Ferreira, I really apologize, at 380 Cotton Street. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1S, that's Single Family Suburban Residential Zoning District. And let me turn this over to staff to set us up.
Yes, thank you, Chair DeCarty and Commissioners. I do have one update. We received one piece of correspondence after the publication of the staff report. It was an email sent to the Planning Commissioner, just a little, Planning Commission, just shortly a while ago, basically expressing concerns about the excavation of the basement potentially causing structural issues to a pool in the neighboring yard. Generally, these are things that are reviewed during the building permit stage. Enforcement of the setbacks and application of standard building codes should address those issues. And with that, I have no other updates to the staff report.
Terrific. Thank you. Let me turn. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Hi, my name is Steve Simpson. Good evening, members of the Commission.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, we can. Thank you.
So I'm the project architect. SDG Architecture, Amy, I struggle with her name too. She works for me. But it's me, Ferreira, I believe, but she's worked for me. She helped process the application, but anyway, I'll try to be brief. I don't have a presentation, but I'll try to explain a little bit about how we got here and what we're trying to do. When our clients bought this property, and when we first looked at it, we actually thought it was a conforming lot. It actually is non-conforming just because of the shape of the lot. It's kind of a pie-shaped property, and we're about nine inches short in the rear. We're well over the lot area, and we're about 120 feet in the front where 80 is required. So it's really just kind of how the back was measured that landed us in front of you tonight. But otherwise, we're conforming in all other areas of the property and the house that we're proposing. Our clients, Steve Herrick and Jennifer Mann, they're here. They're on the call tonight, too, if you have any questions for them. But they live directly next door to the left at 390 Cotton, and they lived there for 14 years. Wanted to kind of update their living arrangement, and when the property came available next door, I thought it was a great opportunity to do that and not leave the neighborhood. So we've been working with them for a number of months to design the house and get in front of you, which we're kind of excited about. It's kind of a modern house, but it's also transitional. I think it shares some DNA with some of the older ranch-style houses with the low-pitched hip roofs, big overhangs. But the detailing is a little more modern in vernacular, but I think it's going to fit in really good, and we're excited about it. So I, there, don't, beyond that, I don't think there's anything that really need to point out that the staff report hasn't pointed out or that you guys can't see from the plans, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And like I mentioned, our clients, Herricks are on the call as well.
Perfect. Thank you, and thanks for being with us this evening. Let me turn to the Commissioners. Are there any clarifying questions for the applicants or staff, just clarifying questions before I turn to Public Comment, and then we can bring it back to the dais and have further discussion or questions about the project? All right. Seeing none on the clarifying questions, I'll now open Public Comment. If you have a public comment on this particular project, again, using the approach that Mr. Turner outlined previously, please raise your hand, and you will be recognized. Mr. Turner is doing double duty this evening.
At the moment, I don't see any hands raised, but again, if you are calling in, please click star nine or click the hand raise hand button at the bottom of your screen if you would like to give a public comment.
Looks like we're probably good to go. We have a sparse crowd this evening, so if you have a comment, it's pretty easy to recognize you. So with that, let me close Public Comment, and let me return it to the dais and open it up for any Commissioner who'd like to begin with any questions of the applicant or any comment, and ultimately, of course, will want a motion. Commissioner Riggs?
I'd have to say this is not a controversial project, as we can tell by the absence of urgent comments from our group. This is one of those projects that is before us because of a matter of inches. And in this case, the matter of inches is due to our interpretation of lot width for a pie-shaped lot. So the lot on which this project sits is, in my opinion, no more controversial than a fully conforming lot, and so I would hesitate in any case to enact a judgmental review of this design. It happens that I think the design is attractive and fits with the neighborhood, and so I'm not going to have any problem with this budget tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Other Commissioner comments or questions? While folks are waiting or considering, I will just say that I completely concur with Commissioner Riggs's assessment on all fronts. And this is a common theme of mine, but with a matter of inches, you know, it would have saved everybody some time if, and I understand why not, but if this had just remained with the Planning Commission and not with us. So in that case, given that we're talking about six or eight inches, I really appreciate the applicant spending the time with us this evening and the stuff in the process.
You're welcome.
Other Commissioner comments, or can I entertain a motion? Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, I will move to approve per the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I will second that.
All right. We have a first and a second for approval per the staff report. Any commission discussion? Before we move to a vote? All right. With that, I'll begin again this evening with Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. Congratulations, and enjoy building and living in your new home. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Well, thank you all. We really appreciate it. Steve, thank you for your help. We love Menlo Park, and we're looking forward to the project. So thank you.
Fabulous. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
With that, I'll close Item F1 on our agenda, and we will move to Item F2. F2 is a use permit of Thomas James Homes at 704 Arnold Way. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and attached garage and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U. That's our Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. And again, to start us off, let me turn it to staff to kick us off.
Thank you again. I do not have any updates to the staff report.
Okay.
Open for questions.
Mr. Turner, before we move to the applicant, any questions of staff? All right. With that, good evening and welcome. I will turn it over, I think, to you, Ms. Felver. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
All right.
A short presentation for you.
Terrific. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Commission. Thank you for your time tonight. Thomas James Homes is the applicant for this project, but we are presenting on behalf of the homeowner, Alex and Erica. And I don't know if they're on the attendees list tonight. You want to raise your hand and if they can introduce themselves for a second before we present. Are you on the call, Erica or Alex?
I see Erica on the attendee list, Ms. Felver.
Oh, here we go. There we go.
Hi there. We're here. Well, thanks for everyone for having us here tonight. My name is Erica. This is my husband, Alex, and we've been living in the Willows since 2014. And since we got married and moved in, we've now had two kids, both attending school in the district. And now we're looking forward to building a home in the Willows and adding to the development of our community. We're thrilled to be partnering with Thomas James to help us build a home to fit our growing family.
Thank you. If we can go back to the presentation, then I'll continue. Okay, thank you. I have control now. Thanks. There we go. 704 Arnold is a court or a corner lot. The cross streets are Arnold Way as well as O'Keefe Street. We do have a veterans campus off to the west of O'Keefe Street, and down towards the south, we have a student campus. And then further down O'Keefe, we do have multifamily density around the single-family area. Our lot is over the minimum requirement area. We have 71, 71 square feet. The lot depth is also over the required of 100 square feet, and it's at 128 and 10 inches. Our width is smaller than the standard, which is the reason we're in front of you tonight. We have a 55-foot, 9-inch width when the minimum is 65 feet. Again, this is a corner lot, and there is a single-family home that's existing on the site. There are some photos on the right-hand side that show that single-family home. Two-car attached garage, which does front on Arnold Way. And there is frontage towards O'Keefe Street, but it's mainly just a grass byjard. And as you can see in the neighborhood across the street, we have another corner lot, and their garage actually faces O'Keefe Street, and their front door faces Arnold Way. And a little bit about the neighborhood, there is a blend of single, one-story, single-family, one-story homes and two-story homes that are emerging in the neighborhood. The top-left image is that neighbor across the street at that corner lot. Again, their driveway facing O'Keefe, they're using horizontal siding with their traditional style with hip roof. The center-top image is the right-adjacent neighbor. They're also minimal traditional style with horizontal siding mainly used and hip roof. And then the right top corner is another neighbor off to the right. Two doors down, again, traditional-style home with horizontal siding and hip roof. The bottom three images are showing the two-story emerging homes off of O'Keefe Street. They're across the way and down east of the site. And the bottom-left corner image is a modern farmhouse-style home, board and bat, the shed and gable roof style, and the center image showing transitional style in the neighborhood. The white and black color scheme and shed and gable roofing. And then the right bottom corner is a stucco transitional home with a gable and shed roof and a combo of hip roof being used as well. And I wanted to show you this because we are proposing a new two-story home on the site. That needs to blend into the neighborhood context. We're proposing a transitional-style home using similar materials that speak to the existing single-one-story homes in the neighborhood and that using that horizontal siding, as you can see. We're also using traditional roof lines with the shed and gable roofs, and then combining that with hip roof. We have hints of modern elements to speak to the transitional style. So you can see that front gable has an asymmetrical window layout, and we're using black-framed windows with no grids and a modern garage door. It's an off-white color selection with dark accents, and we have also wood accents to bring warmth to the color selection. To dive into the site a little bit more, off to the left, you'll see the existing site plan, and then to the right is our proposed site plan. And just to point this out, we want, we're proposing to reorient this garage and front door entrance off of O'Keefe Street, one to align with the pattern of what's off of O'Keefe Street and to utilize and activate that corner as well as utilize the rear yard a bit more. The yellow is showing our required setbacks, and as you can see, our house is quite setback from the rear. There's a blue dash line, very small to see, but it's where this text is, and it's showing that that's our existing home depth, and we're trying to keep to that existing home depth so that we can provide relief to the neighbor, adjacent neighbor, and again, utilize that rear yard space as best as we can. We're also providing a little bit more relief on the right and left-hand side. And then you can see this dark area in comparison to the light shading, and that's our second story being setback from the right side and the left side, again, to reduce the massing as seen from the street and the corner and to centralize that massing. We did work with planning staff on a couple concerns on this project. The previous renderings on the left-hand side, and then on the right-hand side is our proposed rendering. The left-hand side, there was issue with the daylight plane and this massing on the left side at the stair location. And so bringing, reducing our square footage and moving our, dropping our stair roof area was a way to reduce that massing and get out of that daylight plane. We have three trees that we analyzed. Two are actually on site, protected in there. They're in the rear yard, and we're repainting those. This tree that's, there's a canopy that's green, this green circle here, is our protected tree on the neighbor's yard that we're retaining and protecting. And we've worked with the city arborists to make sure that we're providing and lessening the impacts on this tree. We did a tree root analysis to make sure our home is in a great location in proximity to structural roots. And we went further and did some revisions to make sure we're lessening the impact around the tree as well. As you can see, there's this orange walkway. That is our reduced walkway to 42 inches, and it's lengthening in the back, so reducing the concrete that's at our garage landing. And we're changing the material to decompose granite and to avoid any concrete. We're also rerouting the utility lines to make sure that we're not going through any root systems there. And then our arborist report has recommendations for how to install the fencing to make sure that we're appropriately lessening those impacts. And as for neighbors, we had a neighbor meeting on October of last year, and concerns were brought up mainly about our construction processes, and we followed up and have coordinated, and will continue to coordinate with those processes as we move forward. And thank you for your time tonight. We're here for any questions, and we ask that you approve this project.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. So any clarifying questions for the applicant from Commissioners before I open for Public Comment? All right. Seeing none. Again, I will now open Public Comment per the instructions previously given by Mr. Turner. If you would like to speak on this item on the agenda, please raise your hand, and we can recognize you.
Moment, I do not see any hands raised. But again, if you would like to give a public comment, please click the raise hand button, or if you're calling in, click star nine on your phone.
All right. Again, with our relatively sparse turnout this evening, I think I can safely close Public Comment. So let me bring it back to the virtual dais for Planning Commissioners, comments or questions. Everybody would like to go? Mr. Thomas?
Sure, I'll kick this off. I like this project. I like the way concerns have been addressed. There's already a second-story home across the street. The home stays within the existing footprint, and I really like the idea how the driveway is reoriented. And so you really capture that full backyard. So I'm quite supportive of this project.
Any other Commissioner comments or questions? All right. I will also say that, let me recognize Commissioner Riggs.
I apologize. I didn't actually want to cut you off. So I will just concur generally with Commissioner Thomas that I guess my words would be that I think the project is creative. It's a nice interpretation of traditional. I think it works. I'll make particular note of the four-panel garage door, which I think helps the scale of the building rather than the usual five-panel. Um, I'll make particular note of the four-panel garage door, which I think helps the scale of the building rather than the usual five-panel. And so I uh, expect to support this project.
Thanks, Commissioner Riggs. Um, I'll add, yeah, I think this is an eminently supportable project. I think it looks very good. I think it fits in the neighborhood. I think it fits in the lot. I think it's thoughtful. Uh, and it is completely conforming, but for the circumstance of the odd-shaped lot, which we see an awful lot. So I'm disinclined to kibbitz almost entirely for that reason anyway. Any further comments or can I entertain a motion from somebody? Commissioner Thomas.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Doe.
I will second that.
All right, we have a first from Commissioner Thomas, a second from Commissioner Doe. Any discussion or final points from our commissioners? All right, with that, let's go to a vote. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Thomas.
Um, I'm sure I'll have this opportunity after the vote, but I, I think it's awesome, you know, uh, you know, a family in Menlo Park with, with two kids, um, you know, creating more space. Really happy to see that.
Great, thank you. All right, let's uh, go to the vote. We'll begin with Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
I will also vote yes. Congratulations. Thanks for being with us this evening and enjoy both the construction and living in your new home and staying in your neighborhood. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
With that, let me close item F2 on our agenda. And we will now move to the third and final item in public hearing this evening, which is item F3. This is a use permit and I apologize on the pronunciation uh, from Aju Skaria at eight-ten Harvard Avenue. This is a request for use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with a basement on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U, single-family urban residential zoning district. The proposal includes an attached accessory dwelling unit, which is not subject to discretionary review. The applicant is also requesting to maintain a fence greater than seven feet in height along a portion of the right property line. And with that, again, let me turn it all over to staff to start us off and welcome. Thank you for being with us.
Good evening again. Um, so this is Matt Pruders project, but he's not feeling well, so I'm filling in for him. Um, we have no staff updates, but I believe the applicant uh, has a presentation.
Great, thank you. Let's turn to that presentation. Welcome.
Uh, hi, this is Bob Bowles from Boswell Architects.
Good evening, we are Rose and Aju. Um, we have three kids under the age of five. Uh, we moved to Menlo Park, the Aladadts neighborhood uh, two years ago and we love this neighborhood. It's so green and great schools, parks, wonderful neighbors. Um, and we hope we can live here for several years to come. Thank you.
Can we go back to the presentation, please? Hi, this is Bob Bowles from Boswell Architects. I'll get right into the uh, the meat of the presentation. Oh, sorry, I guess we need to um, do a full screen again. Yep, um. The neighborhood has a mixture of one and two-story structures and a variety of styles and ages built between the thirties and, and yesterday, basically. There are plenty of mature trees. It's a very green neighborhood. The existing house was built in the late forties and is a typical and not very special example of ranch house construction. It's considerably smaller than what is needed for a Jew and Rose's family needs. To save yard area, we determined that a second floor was needed, but also determined that a basement was necessary too. We've first looked at remodeling the existing house. However, the house's concrete slab foundation doesn't allow for excavation for a basement and the wall framing would not support a second floor. Additionally, electrical, plumbing and heating systems, as you might imagine for a house of this vintage, as well as the building envelope are all dated and would need major renovation. So the decision was made to demolish the existing structure and build a new house. Um, these are some of the goals for the project, the major goals. Rosen, as you have a large family, um, and they wanted a, a comfortable home for them that would serve their needs for several decades as the children grow up and as, as a Jew and Rose age themselves. They wanted a small ADU for flexibility. Um, they love the greenery in the neighborhood. They wanted to keep the mature trees and they wanted a substantial yard space for outdoor recreation and for the kids uh, to play in. Um, here's the site plan of the project. You can see the, the two large mature trees on the neighbor's properties at the front of the house. And then there's a large redwood on their property in the rear and we had to fit, fit the house between all that. There's a couple of light wells for the basement, one here and one here that are on the south side, so that we'd be able to get a lot of daylight going into the basement. The entrance to the main house is front and center on the front yard in plain view of the street. The entrance to the ADU is around the side yard and in the back. We've already got a full landscape design, including um, front yard landscaping with a new street tree. And rear yard features, including a fire pit, a portable spa and plenty of play space. Um, most of the surrounding fencing is existing. It's in reasonably good shape. A couple areas need repair. Uh, this section in here is existing as over eight, uh, is about eight feet high, including about twelve inches of lattice work. The house next door, this is kind of their, their rear yard because they're on a corner. So we'd like to keep that slightly higher fence for privacy sake. The floor plans, um, the formal living spaces are on the front here on the ground floor with the more um, active family living spaces at the rear. Uh, the backyard is accessed by a covered terrace here. Um, there's also a two-car garage and uh, a one-bedroom, one-bath accessory dwelling unit. Uh, the upstairs has the family bedrooms. And I just wanted to point out that we've recessed this facade of the house, which um, is to the south of the immediate neighbor, uh, well back from the property lines to reduce the amount of shading. These are some of the um, inspiration images that Rose and Aju gave us. And they really like colonial revival architecture. Whether, you know, very traditional or transitional styles, but they like these materials and these rough shapes. Um, so this is the front elevation that we came up with. Um, utilizes a steeper slope roof on these two gables and over the front door. Even though the balance of the roof started a lower slope um, to meet the height requirements. Um, we also wanted to point out again that we're trying to help the neighbor situation. We actually, actually had story poles erected to illustrate the, the shade line of the second floor. And these are the, the pretty pictures that show a, a more artistic rendering of what the house will look like. We've designed some um, classically inspired square columns and pollsters. Beautiful wood front door, a custom garage door. The house has multi-pane windows at the front, but we'd like to um, just carry those around the side for the first bay or so of construction. And then um, do something at the rear that, which is a little bit more asymmetrical and um, contemporary perhaps. Um, so we like to do the more, a more cleaner uh, window design without the mountains. So I'm uh, happy to answer any questions you might have. So, so can Rose and Aju? And our landscape architect, uh, Jeff Feid, I believe is on the, on the presentation also. If you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and thank you for the presentation. So before I open public comment, any clarifying questions um, for anybody from the applicant team here this evening? All right, I actually, I don't have one for um, the team. Ms. Sandemire, I do have one. This is just a double-checking and you may not know this because it was Mr. Pruders project. But on page two thirty-two um, in our packet, it's attachment A. At the top, it actually identifies the property as seven fifty-five Hermosa. But then um, actually restates the correct address. I'm assuming that's, that must be a template that just didn't get changed, but I wanted to double-check.
Um, yeah, that's right. That looks like an error that we overlooked from, yeah, using a previous, previous project as a template.
Okay, but there's nothing else on that page that has impacted. Um, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Uh, with that, um, any clarifying questions from commission? All right, let me open it up for public comment. Uh, again, the directions Mr. Prudor previous, excuse me, Mr. Turner previously gave.
Uh, no hands raised at the moment. Um, if you'd like to give public comment, please click the raise hand button or click star nine on your phone.
All right, and again, with our light turnout this evening, I think I can safely close public comment. And bring that back to the dais uh, for the commission. Any questions or comments? Uh, anybody like to begin? Commissioner Doe.
Um, thank you, Chair DeCarty. I'll just start with a few comments. Um, thank you for your extra time for presenting as um, Chair DeCarty mentioned, just for a couple of feet short of standard. And I, I did see there were some concerns from the neighbor on the northeast, so it's, it's nice that you all and the design team have notably pulled in that uh, second story from the right north side. And generally appreciating consideration um, to all the neighbors in the, in the design.
Thank you. Other commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Riggs.
Uh, I, I think this is a perfectly nice addition to what is a, a very nice neighborhood from Menlo Park. At first, I um, was a little um, taken aback by the difference between the windows at the front uh, and the sides. But in fact, I have seen that on an older building, um, built in the twenties and then added to in the forties. Um, and somehow it works. Um, so I think uh, we'll, we'll just let this happen and and see what it looks like. And um, then I'd like to note that uh, I have no issue with the eight-foot fence between two agreeing neighbors. So I think that's all I had to say on this project.
Any other commissioner comments or questions um, of the applicant team? Uh, I will also say, I think it's a nice project. I think it fits into the neighborhood. I think it's thoughtful in all the ways that previous two commissioners uh, talked about. Um, I also just want to specifically comment on the fence. Yeah, I'm a, I'm a real fan. I think actually uh, the poem is good fences make good neighbors, but I believe that's actually tongue-in-cheek. Um, but I would say that in this case, if there's agreement between the neighbors and it serves privacy purposes and it is already there, uh, that I think that's eminently supportable uh, in this mix. So I'd be prepared to support the project. Any further comments or I'd be prepared to hear a motion? Commissioner Thomas.
I would like to motion to approve.
And motion to approve the project as submitted. Do I have a second? Commissioner Doe.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further comments or remarks from the commissioners before we call the vote? Right, again, let's begin this evening with Commissioner Doe.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
I will also vote yes, so it passes four to zero with our three commissioners absent. Uh, congratulations. Thank you for being with us this evening, all of you. Uh, enjoy both the construction and your new home.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So with that, let me close item F3 on our agenda. Uh, and that now moves us uh, out of the public hearing this evening and item F, and we move to item G for informational items. Once again, I will turn to Ms. Sandemire, excuse me, Sandemire. Apology.
No problem. Um, yes, so the next meeting will be June thirteenth, uh, so that's three weeks from tonight because of Memorial Day. Um, so we don't have the agenda finalized yet. Um, and that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Terrific, thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Riggs?
Um, yes, um, we had uh, spoken last year uh, about the potential uh, to uh, put on the agenda for the commission, um, some um, streamlining changes that we might recommend to council that could be done at this time relatively simply rather than um, waiting for, say, a general plan update. Um, I say that a bit tongue-in-cheek because um, the commission was promised somewhere around two thousand four, two thousand five that we would make a number of uh, single-family residential updates as soon as we got around to a general plan update. Um, and that didn't happen in twenty sixteen and it hasn't happened since. Um, so uh, it occurred to me tonight that the uh, pie-shaped lots um, possibly could be edited to uh, reduce the number of times that an applicant would have to come to the commission. So I just wanted to uh, I guess, ask the chair if he would entertain a request to uh, again, to agendize a couple of uh, minor things that could be updated. Relatively simply in our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I think through the chair to staff, Ms. Sandemire, any thoughts or?
Yeah, I, I certainly, you know, appreciate the thought um, behind this. I think for staff, um, we probably don't have the capacity to take this on. Um, the city council, of course, that's our, that's our work and that's done through the full setting. Um, that's generally when, when um, and other goals and assignments are set. I think if the, if staff receives a request from the chair um, to do some kind of study session just for commissioners to discuss this, um, that's something we could put on the agenda, but um, something that requires staff time um, beyond attending the, the meeting. I don't think is feasible if it's not on the city council's work plan.
Commissioner Riggs, I mean.
I, I, I think that's all we really need and uh, I, I would agree if this starts to mushroom into something that needs staff involvement, then uh, it becomes less appropriate. But if it's something that um, the commission could uh, agree on a, a direct change in wording, for example, fence setback is from the street rather than from the front property line. Um, or, or the public property line rather than any property line and uh, we could look at pie-shaped lots and whether the way in which we calculate the um, lot width could be liberalized. Um, I have to admit, this probably comes up maybe once a year, but
it just happens that I've spent a lot of years on the Commission, so I've seen it, and I do sympathize with any applicant, even if it's only once a year, that applicant considers it to be 100% activity, so. Yeah, with Ms. Sandemeyer's guidelines, I think that would make sense if the Chair pleases.
I do have, along these lines, I think a clarifying question for Ms. Sandemeyer. What is the allowable discussion that how many members of the Planning Commission can have on a particular topic outside of a Planning Commission meeting? Number one, and I assume this is just a Brown Act update. And number two, is there precedent, and I believe there is, to have a subcommittee formed? As I recall, in a previous year, we had three Planning Commissioners that served on a subcommittee that were looking on a particular item and then brought that before us, I cannot recall if it was around ADUs or if it was around something else, but we just, so, and I say that because trying to move to something that would actually be action-oriented, it feels a little clunky to have seven Commissioners actually going line by line on stuff, but I could imagine that two or three Commissioners might be able to take a look, work through something, and then you might actually have something the Commission, in fact, could agendize and approve, so I'm just curious with Sandemeyer about a process step, what are some of the other ways that might be available to the Commission?
Yeah, I think a subcommittee would have to be less than a quorum, so two or three Commissioners. I'd have to speak with the city attorney and other planning management staff to get some more guidelines I can share with the Commission. But I think I should probably, you know, I wouldn't want expectations to be too high, I think, and I wouldn't want a subcommittee to do too much work when we don't have the staff time to really do the analysis and public outreach, it does become a lengthy process to update the code. And I certainly appreciate that there are items that, you know, a lot of us agree it would be helpful to update, but it's it is a lengthy process, and I think it is something that to really go through the whole process, we would need direction from city council to go forward on.
All right, so just to play that back, we could agendize, we could have an informational session, we could have discussion, but functionally, absent staff capacity to be able to move on that, we actually could not, as a Planning Commission, functionally change policy on this topic, do I have that right?
Yeah, any updates to the code would have to go, be approved by city council, of course, and that that process requires a lot of staff time, so if it's something the council adds to the goal-setting work plan at some point, then I think that that would be the process. The Commission, if Commissioners agree on changes they'd like to make, I think it's still difficult to get it to city council. What Commissioners can do is speak independently as just residents of the city at city council. I think there's also an option for the, to agendize an item and appoint one Commissioner to speak at the city, you know, at a city council meeting. Or, and especially at the time when there's a goal-setting and that sort of thing for the next year, but I think, you know, anytime, of course, a Commissioner could speak at the, at the beginning of a city council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sandemeyer, that's helpful, all of that made sense to me, I just to clarify, and one of the last points you raised. So we could agendize an item, we could have a discussion, we could come to a general sense of the Planning Commission in some sort of way, and then essentially designate a Commissioner to speak to the city council, and the distinction would be, rather than a Commissioner speaking on their own behalf, they would actually be delivering some kind of agreed-upon point on behalf of the Planning Commission to the city council, do I have that right?
That's correct, yes, I do think it's normally not the case that the council adds new work plan items or or give new direction to staff in the middle of the year, if there's no extenuating circumstances, but it's, yeah, certainly something that the Commissioners can do.
All right. That's helpful in this mix. And then I guess my question again is, and I apologize, this is my, what is this, my fourth time around the sun on this, I should know, but we actually don't have a session where we look at or anyway comment on the city council priorities for a year, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, so other Commissioners, Commissions, you know, like the Housing Commission, they have a work plan.
Yeah, you can see.
The Planning Commission does not, because you have the kind of unique task of reviewing and approving various projects, and then other projects making recommendations on to the city council.
I'll say it is a bit odd not to have that, because the dilemma here is, is we don't have a place where seven Commissioners could actually have this conversation, potentially talk about other topics, and then prioritize. So as Chair, and this is coming full circle to your request, Commissioner Riggs, I am, and generally, as a Commissioner, in alignment with where I believe you're headed here, is, you know, heavens, let's have, you know, a couple of things that are streamlined. The question is whether we can actually have an impact if we agendize, number one, but as Chair also, are there other topics that, you know, there's even greater interest or urgency from the Commission to be able to have that kind of session? And I guess with Sandemeyer, we don't have a mechanism or a place as a Planning Commission to have that discussion. When I served on the Environmental Quality Commission, as you noted, we had that annually, and we were able to, you know, then work with staff to be able to parse out those priorities. But we simply do not have that here, is that correct?
That's correct. I think, as I mentioned before, an item could be agendized, kind of as a study session discussion item. If that's something US Chair would like to add to the agenda. I do think the Planning Commission is a little different, because unlike other advisory commissions, you're able to make decisions on a lot of projects, and I think that's, so it's kind of a unique commission, and that's probably the reason there's no work plan.
Okay, well, on this item, that's very helpful, I completely hear your Commissioner Riggs. I'll just say to all of us, I plan to follow up with you, Commissioner Riggs, if you don't talk to anybody else, that's two of us, and we don't have any Brown Act issues, and then determine what we might do based on this discussion. Any other questions for staff on this item on our agenda this evening? All right, terrific, so Ms. Sandemeyer to staff, Mr. Turner, thank you for tonight, and with that, we're going to gavel us closed to two minutes to eight o'clock. I only wish that former Chair Doran were here to see the alacrity with which we dispatched our duties this evening, so thank you all and have a good evening.